Welcome, well, excuse me. Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council Meeting. It is July 18th. If you will, if you'll bow your heads with me and then we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, thank you for this night. Lord, we ask that we say prayers for those things that are spoken and unspoken. Lord, I thank you for the blessings that you give us of our country, for all the things that are going on right now. Lord, I thank you for our first responders, for our employees, Lord, that you just bless them. And, Lord, just help us make decisions tonight that'll be fitting to you. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
My Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, I would like to make just a quick comment tonight. And we have a lot of special people who are in this city. But yesterday, George and Betty Jackson, who moved here back in the eighties, I was talking with my wife, it was day before yesterday. Ms. Betty, for many of the, who met her, she was of small stature, but she was a lady who did wonderful things in this community. And so she passed day before yesterday. And so we want to give a, just our thoughts and our prayers and really our thanks to what that family has done in our community. So for Dr. George, longtime vet in this community, we want to say thank you to the Jackson family. All right, we'll move to, I don't think, Melanie, we have any people who have signed up for public comment? Erin?
No.
Melanie? Okay. All right, we'll move to the consent agenda. You have 15 items that are on your consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to old business. You have land use matters. We have ordinance 24OZ16 zoning for property along Butler Drive.
Move for approval.
Second.
Bill had the motion and Sean had the second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right. Matthew, we've got the Plan of Services and annexation for property along New Salem Highway.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our one and only land use public hearing tonight is for the annexation of two parcels that are located along the south side of New Salem Highway, just to the west of Veterans Parkway. It consists of one single family home and one existing church. Now, these properties are kind of surrounded by the city limits, except on a part of their south side. The total study acreage is about 10 acres or so. These properties, the annexation is kind of in conjunction with the widening of New Salem Highway. So the widening of New Salem Highway is going to damage the septic field area for both of these properties. And so their septic systems will be damaged by the road construction and utility work necessitating the annexation of the property, of both of these properties, so that they can be served by the city sewer, which will be available to these two properties with the, with the construction of the improvements to New Salem Highway. So both property owners submitted petitions for annexation. We've conducted our Plan of Services, and the Plan of Services is in the agenda materials before you. It'll be relatively easy to extend services to these properties with the fact that they are basically surrounded by the existing city limits. One item of note, however, there will need to, in order for the city to be able to provide its customary ISO Class 1 fire protection, a fire hydrant will need to be provided along the common property line between the two parcels. And that fire hydrant will be provided with the construction of the new CUD water line, which will be done with the, with the road construction project. And so we would expect that fire hydrant to be installed by late 2025. So with that being said, oh, I mentioned the Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing on this matter and recommends its approval. There's no companion zoning request, so the, both properties would be zoned RS15 if they're annexed into the city. Be happy to answer any questions either before or after the public hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Baumley? All right, thank you, Mr. Baumley. All right, we need to hold a public hearing for the Plan of Services and the annexation. If you're wanting to speak for or against, if you'll come to the podium, if you're representing a group, you have five minutes. Otherwise, you have three minutes. If you'll keep all comments directed towards the council, we'll get all those questions answered at the end. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, the podium is open. All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider for annexation Resolution 20, excuse me, we need to pass the Plan of Services for Resolution 24RPS22 first.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider Resolution 24RA22, and this is for the annexation.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 18. This is ordinance 24O23, Amendment to the Murfreesboro City Code, Airport, Chapter 3. Mr. Gurkey.
Hello, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Today, I bring for you a proposed changes to Chapter 3 of our city code. Really, the two changes are the composition of the Airport Commission, which would eliminate the ex officio positions, which are occupied by the city manager and a representative of the MTSU Aerospace Department. The second change is in 3-53, and it regards the purpose of the Airport Commission. And one of those lines currently reads about the cooperation with the development and implementation of the MTSU Aerospace Department with their move and things going on there. We're changing the wording to the cooperation of all commercial operators in the development and implement, implementation of their businesses and the aeronautical services they provide, which MTSU is a commercial operator. So we still have a great working relationship with them, and we'll continue to have that. And this just represents more of our organization now as it is today as compared to when this chapter was originally written. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to take them.
Any questions? Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Chad. All right, we'll move to item 19, ordinance 24O25. This is the Ethics Code. Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is the same ordinance that we discussed at our workshop last Thursday. At that time, there were, we had a robust discussion on various items and wanted to answer a couple of your questions that you presented during, during that meeting and then offer you the opportunity to answer additional questions or ask additional questions regarding the ordinance and how it might be applied in various situations. The first question I wanted to address was, was with respect to whether officials, be they elected or appointed, whether they could provide goods or services to the city for compensation. We had discussed the possibility of, well, what if it was an invitation to bid and they were the lowest bidder? The answer to that question is actually very straightforward. It's in state law, and it basically says that no elected or appointed official can contract with the city for the performance of any work that is to be paid out of the treasury. So that is pretty clear. That is, that is included in, by reference in the existing ordinance because it references state law. The other questions were about how, how the, the ordinance might be applied in particular situation, and I'm happy to answer any hypothetical, try to answer any hypotheticals you might want to ask me. And the third area was looking at what mechanism City Council wanted to have in place for processing, investigating, hearing, and deciding complaints filed against City Council members. That's, that's really, everything else seems to be fairly clear. There are basically, if you look across the various ethical codes that have been adopted by other municipalities in the state, there are two ways that, with some variations, two ways that they're handled. One is through an independent ethics commission. And that is basically where the Ethics Commission is the finder of fact with respect to an ethics complaint. It determines, you know, based on the preponderance of the evidence, does there appear there was an ethical violation? And then that having, if there is found to have been an ethical violation, that would then get referred to City Council to take action on that finding of fact. The, the other structure that, that is used is where it is actually the City Council that would receive the complaint, make a determination, is there, if everything in the complaint is true, would that constitute an ethical violation? So essentially, is there merit to the complaint? City Council, the disinterested members of City Council would decide, yes, this has merit. They would refer it to typically as an attorney to investigate it and then come back, that investigator to come back with a recommendation to City Council. I, you know, and I would think that City Council would have a hearing on that because the, you know, the person who was accused of the ethical violation would have a right to respond to that. And then City, so City Council would be playing the role, both of fact finder and making determination of, making a determination, is, was there an ethical violation and what the remedy is? So it's condensed into one body. With what, what I've proposed in this ordinance, and again, I want to stress, this is, this is ultimately your decision which way you want to go. I've just presented one option in this ordinance. The, the process for processing, investigating a complaint that was filed against an official would go something like this. It would, once it gets filed with the city recorder, it would get referred to the city attorney to make sure that the, that the complaint met the requirements of a complaint under the ordinance. So it's basically just, does it meet, it make, meet the technical requirements? And those include, you know, it has to be based on personal knowledge, it has to allege facts, it has to, and it has to be sworn under oath. By swearing, by having sworn under oath in front of a notary public, that means would, if something in there was knowingly false, it could subject the person filing the complaint to perjury charges. So...
Or libel.
Or libel, yes. So that is, so there is...
So that's the mechanism to make sure someone's not filing a false claim?
Right. So it's, it, well, it, what it does is it's, it would give someone pause before they start making a false claim.
Okay.
So, and, and it would have to be knowingly, a knowingly false claim. So at that point in time, the city attorney would make the determine, yes, it checks all the boxes of the complaint. And if that's done, it would be, it would be referred to the Ethics Commission. The Ethics Commission, acting as the finder of fact, would first take a look at it, at the complaint and say, if everything, if everything is in, that is stated in this complaint is true, would that constitute an ethical violation? If the answer to that is yes, then you would proceed with the investigation and in a hearing before the Ethics Commission. But if the answer to that is no, that even if you take everything, you assume everything in the complaint is true, and that would still not constitute an ethics violation, the Ethics Commission would dismiss it. It would not go to investigation, it would not go to a hearing, and would never come to City Council. So then if, if it did, but if it did meet that, that stated a claim essentially of an ethics violation, then it would go to an investigation and a hearing. Ethics Commission would consider it and then make a recommendation back to City Council. So those are, those are two options. What is in, in front of you right now is the Ethics Commission option, but if it's the will of council to do it a different way, I can, we can, I can rewrite it so it address, you know, is consistent with what City Council wants.
And who would you, who would you think would be on the Ethics Commission? Would it be somebody the mayor would find? Do you think the executive team would be on the, who do you think would be the exec, the commission?
I mean, I, right now, it's, it's set at five members. I would probably, you could probably take it down to three. I picked five from another jurisdiction. And there's different theories in terms of who could sit on that. A lot of, I'm going to take an example of some, some jurisdictions focus and they want lawyers to sit on, sit on that. It could be, it could be people who broadly represent the community too, because, you know, part of the idea of the Ethics Commission is it represents the conscience of the community.
Sure.
And, and it's not, it's not always a pure legal issue, and the Ethics Commission could always, and in fact, in the ordinance as proposed, there is a mechanism for the Ethics Commission to retain independent legal counsel.
Adam, I, I think, this is just my opinion, but I would rather see the option where the City Council makes that determination of whether an investigation needs to take place, and then that is referred to, the City Council finding an attorney that would go from there. I just know from our standpoint, the toughest board that we have to fill right now is the disciplinary review board.
Right.
You know, because those are non-paid boards, and you're, that, those are tough boards. I can only imagine how hard it would be to find someone who would be willing to serve in such a public role as making a determination on an ethics complaint against an elected official when, that's a tough ask to get a citizen to be able to sit on that board. You know, I looked, I watched the, or read the article from yesterday, and I looked at the Ethics Commission that the county has, and that's predominantly all elected officials who are on that board, just because I also think it would be hard to get someone willing to do that. So I, I mean, I would like to see option two, where the complaint would come to the council, we would determine if it's factual, and then from there, determine who that would be sent out to for an investigation.
I get behind that.
I'm sorry. That's the right process, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And, you know, one, one interesting kind of, one jurisdiction that has done something interesting that I think is compelling in that model is the City of Lebanon, where they have, they have pre-selected attorneys that would serve on a rotating, I think on a rotating basis, or City Council could decide, we want to assign it to this attorney.
Sure.
And, and so you're not, you're, and you're not going out hunting for that, that person. We, we've already have that kind of structure when it comes to administrative hearing officers for the disciplinary review board, so we know that's a structure that works. Those attorneys would be compensated as part of that, the investigation. And, and also, you know, one option would be that you don't pick an attorney that resides in Rutherford County, or does most of their, or has their legal offices in Rutherford County, then you pull someone.
Could we also offer a method of like recusal for the attorneys as well? You know, if we do like a rotating basis?
Oh, yes, yes.
Say, hey, if you have a, like, or if you're on, like, say, I don't know an exact scenario where that may come up, but say someone makes an ethics complaint against me and an attorney, even if Attorney Nashville hears it, it may be someone I went to law school with.
Right. Of cour, of course, they, I mean, and they would be required under the Board of Professional, Rules of Professional Conduct as a lawyer to recuse themselves, I would think.
I would think so. They're not acting as a...
Well, I think kind of candor.
They're not technically opposing counsel.
It's the, I mean, there are other, there are, you know...
Two lawyers arguing over the rules of professional.
There are conflicts that don't involve necessarily, it is still a conflict of interest, even though they're not on opposing sides.
Yeah.
They can't be, they could not necessarily be objective in that role.
Right.
In the same way that a judge recuses themselves if they, you know, from a matter where they've had, they have some personal or business relationship with one of the parties.
And would you compensate the lawyers?
I would, I would think so, absolutely, yeah.
I mean, I think they would have to be...
You would have to, and you would have to figure out how to do that, you know, for DRB administrative hearing officers. I think, I might be wrong. I think the rate is 250 an hour, but I bet it would be, for something like this, it would have to be higher than that.
And to be clear, we've, you know, talked about, this has been something that's been talked about for some time, but there are no ethical complaints or violations that has been presented on anyone up here. This is just something that we've talked about to be able to put a mechanism in place that we currently don't, don't have.
I, I mean, I...
We're not trying to, we're not trying to fix a problem or solve a problem. We're looking at anticipation, if there ever is an issue that we, there's no ambiguity in how we just, how we handle this.
I mean, to my, I've been with the city for 14 years, and to my knowledge, there's been never any formal ethics or conflict of interest complaint filed against a member of City Council.
And to make sure that everyone understands that we file statements of disclosures, we file conflicts of interest, all of those things we have to file by December 31st every single year.
That's correct.
And those are filed here with the city, so...
And campaign donations are, are, you know, if they're, they are a matter of public record with the state.
Correct.
So also, you know, we've been dealing with this for a while, but is it also protecting council members who may be involved in a bid or something?
Well, that's, that was the first point, is that they cannot be involved, they cannot bid on city work.
So what about if my family's business, which is a funeral home, I don't see any example, but something came up in a bid and Scales and Sons won the bid, okay, then I get up here to vote, I can recuse myself.
That's correct.
But I don't see the point in me doing that when the thing passes anyway. In other words, we shutting the front door and letting that come in to the back door. Why does it matter if I recuse myself or not? That's what I'm saying. Why does it matter if a council member recuses themselves when it's going to pass anyway, and I'm going to benefit anyway?
Well, you're, you're assuming a situation where it is, you know, there's an overwhelming majority of vote, but consider it's a situation where your vote would be the deciding vote. It was a, you know, we have seven members, and it was a vote either four to three, one way or the other, and you're, and the, the person with the conflict is the deciding vote. That creates an issue. I mean, you're, I mean, your point is, if you, in, in the effect, if it's going to be, you know, if you recuse yourself and the vote is six to zero, and if you don't recuse yourself and the vote is seven to zero, your point is well taken that it really doesn't make a difference, but it does, but there are votes where it does make a difference.
Well, I've just seen in my 14 years of sitting up here, I've never seen a bid that didn't go through like that. I mean, so I'm just, I mean, I'm not saying I'm not for it, I just, the explanation, you know, we, not making a big deal, but getting ready to put this in our ordinance, and it's just a waste of time.
I think, well, first of all, I think it's already in state law, and it's, and the example you're, you're describing is, is already covered by the city's existing ethics policy, and failure to disclose or failure to recuse yourself would constitute a violation of the ethics policy and potentially state law. If someone, if, so that is, so that particular example would not be, is not, would not be handled differently under existing state law or the existing ethics policy versus what I've proposed here. Those standards apply.
Yeah, all I'm saying, all I am saying is, I might as well vote for it because it's going to pass anyway. But I'm good.
Adam, the, I guess, to the mayor's point, it's, it's never been an issue. There's never been a complaint filed. But I do worry about some sort of policy being weaponized, to the mayor's previous point from the workshop last week. And we kind of see that going on right now in other parts of government, you know, committees or accusations being weaponized. That being said, pick a council person, whatever their company or business is, I'll use me as an example. I think I used myself as a painter last week, hypothetically. I'm a painter, and I vote on something, and it end up, no bid, the builder developer comes to me and says, hey, I want you to paint all these houses, and I didn't recuse myself. Is that a violation if that occurs in under one year?
Under the policy, or under the, the ordinance as currently written and proposed, if you engage in a contract to perform work in connection with the project that you voted on, then yes, that would be an ethics violation.
If it's a year and a day, one day after a year, then no.
Then it would not, under the way it's written right now, it would not be a violation.
Or... So the key is, it's the, it's the time and whether you voted on it and whether you're personally profiting from it, because that's how you earn your living. I get it. We all had to make a living.
Right.
Or you would need to abstain from the vote.
Right. If you, if you abstained, if you abstained on the vote that came before, when the matter became before council and you abstained from the boat, vote, there would be no restriction on your performing work in connection with that project because you didn't vote on it.
Yeah.
So you could go paint that house the next day.
I can go, I can go paint that house that Sean Wright is selling, that Jamie Everwater is closing on, that Kurt Wade is paving the driveway, you know, whatever the situation is, I can go paint that house.
Thanks for throwing everybody under the...
I threw everybody under the house. And Bill Shacklet is taking the photo that go into the Realtor magazine.
I'm not part of it.
You're not part of it. You're just down at the election office, okay, right now, watching people not vote. Okay.
And I'll add that the...
I'm bleeding.
I mean, and this is kind of your one year versus a year and one day. There is nothing magical about the one year it is, it was, in conversations with some other people, that the year seemed like a reasonable measure, but I think reasonable people can disagree as to what would be the appropriate time limit there.
Okay. The last thing is, if you've recused, you're fine. Let's talk about the examples I sent you around donations.
Sure.
Because, I mean, let's face it, we all run campaigns, we all take donations, and I guess it's example 12 or 13 that I sent you. You know, if you could shed a little light on that, you know, when people are donating to campaigns, Bill doesn't have that problem. He doesn't take any money, you know? He's taking everybody's photo in town. town, you know. We like you someday, Bill.
Well, here, I, would you like me to read those two?
Read, yeah.
So these are two that, examples that Council Tutsman Maxwell sent me. Anonymous councilperson has accepted donations in past political campaigns from Sally Sue Jones, who is a Realtor slash builder developer. Councilperson accepted the donation and reported it on their campaign financials and is later elected, reelected to council. A vote comes up within a year of the donation, and the councilmember votes for the project of Sally Sue Jones instead of recusing themselves for the vote. Is this a violation? Assuming the, the contribution was made and accepted and reported in compliance with state election law, that would not be a violation.
Okay. Fair enough.
And, and that's, that's not something that's unique to this policy. That is, that is standard across the state. And, and, and just to provide the rationale, is the, the issue is there is whether something is disclosed, whether there is sunlight, whether it is public, and the campaign, the campaign donation is public. It's a matter of public record.
And the last thing is, any sort of complaint, you're saying that person has to, I guess, be willing to state it, have it notarized under penalty of perjury.
Yeah, I will, let me turn to the page here.
That's true. Some elected officials don't want to have it notarized, right?
Um, the complaint, so the complaint must have, be in writing, and signed and sworn to by the complainant other oath, evidenced by a notary public, and shall contain the following. The complainant's legal name, current mailing address, phone number, and email address, if any. The name of the person or persons who are, who allegedly violated the policy, a summary of the facts giving rise to the alleged ethics complaint, and an explanation of why the alleged facts constitute a violation of the Ethics Code. Now, that last one, they don't have, it doesn't, doesn't have to be lawyerly specific. You don't have to say what they did is a violation of Section 3A, you know, of the Ethics Code. You don't, it doesn't have to be that specific, but it has to be, that you have to be able to track it. You, we're not requiring legal precision, but you have to be able to glean from the face of the complaint what the alleged violation is and what the, what, what the problem is.
And you're saying city attorney would make that determination?
I, the city attorney would make that determination. Did it check the boxes? And if it didn't check the boxes, what happens is that the city attorney would send a letter to the person who filed the complaint, send them a copy of the ethics policy and say, give them the opportunity to resubmit the complaint in a manner that complied with, with those technical requirements. So for example, someone submitted a complaint that was not sworn to under oath and notarized, that it would be sent back and said it was not notar-, it was not sworn to, was not notarized.
But wouldn't it already be part of the public record and subject to FOIA?
Yeah. Well, that, that's-
Even if it's not sworn and notarized? For instance, say there's a, a person, his name's, I don't know, Bobby Stevens, and Bobby makes lots of complaints against elected officials, right?
Yep.
Can he continuously make complaints without swearing to them or having them notarized, and you just keep rejecting them, but it still goes in the public record?
Yes.
Because I think that's what Mr. Maxwell is referring to, is, is what we call weaponization of complaints.
That, that's the case.
You throw it out there, it creates the perception, whether there's validity to it or not.
Yeah. I mean, some people have nothing better to do, so.
That's, that's the case now.
Yeah.
This, this ordinance does not change that. Under the Tennessee Public Records Law, it is, you know, most documents received by the city are public records. You know, unless, unless there's something in there that is somehow declared confidential under state law.
Yeah, I just think what's difficult there is in your, your, you're presumed guilty without ever having a trial. You don't get the opportunity of a, it never even makes it to a commissioner, to council, to say, hey, there was no malfeasance here. Right? But it's already in the public record, and it's gonna be used against you forever.
But what if the city attorney can make the, instead of just totally dismissing it at his level, pass it on to the council and say, I don't see any relevance to this, and the council makes a call on that.
Kind of like an attorney general's opinion.
Yeah.
Like, can we issue a statement that says, this was not notarized, or we found no merit in this, so that the person who it's being used against has something to say, hey, look, I'm innocent?
Oh, well, yeah. I mean, my, or the city attorney's letter back to the complainant would also be a public record, so that it would say that this, this is being administratively dismissed because it did not comply with the requirements of, of the ordinance.
And maybe suggest getting a hobby or something.
Can we go back to the example that you said about developers and campaign contributions?
Sure.
Is there TCA or any Tennessee Ethics Commission, is there any kind of reference I can give someone that had that question?
I could, I could find it for you. I don't have that cited off the top of my head, but the language that, 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 that is in this proposed ordinance-
Conform.
With respect to campaign contributions is consistent across other jurisdictions, and I believe, and it is consistent with state law. So we can, we could, I can find that a legal authority.
Thank you. I'd like, I'd like to have that.
Sure.
And this is the same process that'll work for even a, a city employee having a complaint against a, a department. It would come before council?
No, if it, if it, if it's an ethic, if it's ethics complaint against a city employee, and, and we're gonna assume it's not the city manager, city recorder, or city attorney here, but any-
City judge. Don't forget that one.
And city judge, yes. Then that, what that would do, it would be basically handled in accordance with the city's disciplinary policies, and so the city attorney is, is, under this ordinance, would be tasked with investigating the, the employee's conduct, and then making a finding of fact to the city manager to make a decision.
With, with the same process that they have to have it signed, notarized.
Exactly.
They're, they're, they're putting it out there, and if it's frivolous, then they're exposed for doing something frivolous.
Right, and they could, for, I mean, for making false statements as an employee, you can be terminated for that. Yeah.
So how do, how do we alter what you presented us? That Section 236 is about the creation of the Ethics Commission.
What, what I would, there's two ways that you could do this. One would be, and this may be the cleanest, if you, if we wanted to defer to the next meeting, and, and I could come back and rewrite what is currently Section 3 of the ordinance, which deals with, or I'm sorry, it's Section 2 of the ordinance, which deals with the Ethics Commission, and I would remove that and put in the, the mechanism where it's city council that would receive the complaint and make an initial determination with respect to the merit or the, of, of an ethics complaint against a city official. And I'd be happy to do that, and it's, there are many examples out there, and that, that's actually, that is what the MTAS model code of ethics has, is, is that.
So, so how would that work when it's someone on council, then?
So if it were, an example, if it was someone on council, if the complaint met the technical requirements of a complaint, the city attorney would present it to council, and city council would have to determine whether that, on its face, if all of the, assuming all of the allegations are true, whether the complaint has enough merit to it that it, it warrants being investigated further and having a hearing conducted on it. And if, but, if, if city council looks at the complaint, and even though it checks all the boxes of being in writing and sworn to under oath, they say, this is not an ethics violation, it can be dismissed at that point. But, and it would, the only people who would be able to vote on it would be the, you know, it would, if it's against one-
Excluded the member.
It would, you would obviously exclude the member against whom the complaint was made.
Which is what I was gonna ask. So if there's seven on council, and let's say it's Bill, not that Bill would ever do anything wrong. We all know that. So you take Bill out of the equation, you got six council members. There's a potential for a tie.
There is a potential for a tie.
Who breaks that tie? Is it the city attorney?
Nope.
Who?
Like, there's-
That was great.
It's a tie, it's a, it's, I, I mean, I think it's a tie, and, 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 it's done, I think it's done at that point, in the same way, in the same way that if you have a tie on an ordinance.
Darren Gore wants to get in on the action, I can tell.
Yeah. You, you would have to, you would, I think, there would have to be a majority that says this needs to be investigated further.
Okay.
You know, I think if we're gonna proceed with this, it'd be good to get the clean version sent back to us.
Sure.
Make the motion to defer.
Second.
We have a motion to defer second. Any discussion?
I guess we're deferring.
I would like to see the one year go to a little longer, like a year's a short period of time.
What's your number?
Two.
Years?
Two years.
Oh, I see, I see. You're sa-, okay, I see.
Yeah.
I thought you were saying like six months. It's like, no, no, no.
No, no. I'd say two years.
Eighteen months?
Maybe eighteen months, you know. I just think a year's a short period of time.
That's an easy one to be able to amend when it comes back again. I mean, that's a, a num-, I mean, something to really think about. I mean, that's an easy one, adding the, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I see what you're saying, though, Austin. Like, in my industry specifically, if someone owned a title company and sat up here, they wouldn't see the business for maybe two years.
Two years.
So it, it would, yeah.
Yeah.
They may paint quicker, but they may not-
Yeah. I'm a heck of a painter, just, just wait.
I would pay to see you an overall.
Speed, speed.
I got a sprayer.
Yeah. I could get down with two years, too.
Yeah.
If they come back to us. Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor.
No, that, I think that's fine. Maybe go ahead and change.
I'll put two years, and if someone wants to change it back to one, they-
Yeah.
They can vote on it.
All right, we have a motion of second for deferral. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to ordinance twen-, or, excuse me, ordinance 24, oh, 24, City
Code, Chapter 27.5, Amendment to the Water Resources. Valerie.
Hello, jumped up here kind of quick, so I can get the presentation down. Good evening. I'm here to present the Stormwater Ordinance. And in 2022, the state issued a new NPDES permit, and, which is requiring staff to amend Chapter 27 and 0.5 of the City Code in order to be compliant with the new rules. The Stormwater Management Chapter covers illicit discharges, construction site runoff, control measures of stormwater buffers, compliance and enforcement requirements, and also the stormwater user fee. And why or what, what are the changes? There's new rules, buffer and stormwater control measure designs, updates to the construction site runoff section, and this also incorporates staff requests and lessons learned. So far, there's been many presentations of, of the new rules that are proposed. There's been council workshop, public notice, couple of stakeholder meetings, planning commission, Water Resources Board, and the proposal is the first reading tonight, with the hopes, if it passes, there would be a second reading sometime in August, supposedly August 22nd, and trying to have an effective date of September 6th in order to meet the rule of being, of implementation by 2024. So if there are any questions that you may have.
Any questions, Ms. Smith?
Good job on your explanation, and good job on your new position presenting, but I see Mr. Gore rubbed off on you with these PowerPoints.
You know, he is not gonna let me up here without one.
PowerPoint check.
Darren's employee reviews be like, how many PowerPoints did they make this year?
How many slides was in this PowerPoint?
I need a little more animation.
You know what? I move for approval. You did great.
You want the slides to bounce in, right?
We have a motion.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Good job.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
They did just flip off the screen, Darren, so she gets bonus points.
Hey, she's, she's gonna take Water Department to the next level.
Valerie, I do have a question. How long have you been with the city of Murfreesboro?
Uh, I've been over twenty-six years.
Okay.
Wow.
I, I, I just wanna make, I, I got to spend a lot of time at City Hall today, and we had a lot of talk about, sort of, the batter up, and this is a great example of good leadership, and Valerie going to that next step. So I know it's an interim position right now, but thank you for your hard work. So.
And a female. Yay.
That's right, Madeline. Me and you holding it down up here.
All right, we, we're gonna move to Resolution 24R23, opioid litigation settlement agreement with Kroger Company.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, members of council, in this resolution, it would authorize the city of Murfreesboro to join Tennessee and other local governments to participate in the Tennessee State Subdivision Opioid Settlement Agreement with Kroger Company. Tennessee and other states have reached this settlement with Kroger stemming from Kroger's sale of opioids. If the, if fully adopted nationally, the maximum payments to Tennessee and its qualifying local governments would be more than $42 million. This is very similar to other settlements that city council has approved, and so this is just the first step authorizing the city to partici-, participate in the settlement. I, I, I'm not in a position right now to know how, exactly how much money could be coming to the city under the settlement, but the resolution would authorize the mayor, the city recorder, and the city attorney to execute whatever documents are necessary to participate in the settlement and, and to receive any settlement funds. As, as for your approval.
Thank you, Adam. I will make a motion to approve, but I will say that it will never be enough money. As everyone up here, I think, knows, the opioid crisis is something that's very close to my heart, and so I appreciate your hard work on this, but Kroger will never be able to pay enough money.
I agree.
I agree.
Motion in the second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to Fiscal Year 25 Annual Action Plan, Community Development, and this will start the portion of our meeting that we will be grading PowerPoints, so.
Can I go home now?
Mr. Gore, you're in charge of this.
Did they use the official city of Murfreesboro template?
That's right.
He did use the logo, so he gets some, some extra credit for that.
Yeah.
Leave Darren alone.
Mr. Holmes?
The, the item we have before you tonight is the Annual Action Plan for Community Development Department. Our Annual Action Plan, which obviously we do every year, is a roadmap on how we're gonna allocate funds that we receive from CDVG and from Home Investment Partnerships. These funds are used to benefit low and moderate income individuals. Funds are allocated in the Annual Action Plan. All the funds must be allocated. Both the draft and the final went through public meetings in March and June. Come on. So this year, we're receiving $928,000 for CDVG, and we're receiving $409,000 for Home. For the CDVG allocations, obviously, we're spending 20%, which is the max, for admin, 14% on public service grants, which you can see the five sub recipients that will be receiving, $25,000. We'll be doing single-family rehabs, affordable housing assistance, which is down payment assistance, and public infrastructure improvements. And out of the home money, 20% has to be settled. And out of the home money, 20% has to be set aside for community housing development organization. We're also giving 60% to Murfreesboro Housing Authority and 10% to Doris Folk. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Holtz. All right, we'll move to NeoGov, ATRAC System Agreement. Mr. Wilkerson?
Good evening, council and mayor. Hope you're all doing well this evening. You have before you an agreement with a system called ATRAC. ATRAC is a system that sits on a platform that we use called NeoGov. After thorough research, staff recommends adding this, this system to our process. This will allow us to enhance our recruiting and onboarding capabilities, allow us to have access to assist to candidates throughout the United States, actually, in the Southeast, anywhere between 250,000 applicants and statewide, be more like 1.9 million. The cost for the, the system is $27,500 for the first year. It has an auto renewal attached to it over multiple years. In over three-year process, it would be about $70,000. The cost of the agreement for the first year will be funded by the department's FY '25 operating budget. With that said, I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
If no questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move to Item 24, Update Policy Number 30234010 and 1009.
Was there a PowerPoint?
You know what, councilman, I did not get that memo.
We expect your letter of resignation tomorrow.
Oh, wait, hold on, let me...
Yeah, I appreciate you.
All right, thank you. Council, you have before you three policies to, that we, the staff updated. The updated were due to some recent audits and also some better planning for, for a budgetary standpoint. First policy is policy number 3023, which is the FTA Drug and Alcohol Policy. Feedback received from the audited organization, which was the Federal Transit Administration, indicated that a policy needed to be updated to comply with current FTA procedures related to random, reasonable suspicion, and post-accident drug and alcohol testing. These changes were made in the policy. Our next policy is 4020, I'm sorry, 4010, which is the Uniform Shoes and Equipment. The city furnishes equipment and gear for certain employees to wear during their work hours. The policy was updated so the value of the voucher that we give employees for footwear so that the voucher could be established as far as the cost of the voucher in the budget process. And the last policy is numbered 1,009, which is the overtime pay and compensatory time for non-exempt employees. Feedback received and an audit conducted by the Tennessee Highway Safety Office indicated that the policy needed to be updated to apply or to match our current pay practices. Some of the language that was updated was regarding adding the 37.5 hours per week and the 40 hours for all employees and most, and all the police officers as well. All the changes were made in all three of these policies, so staff is requesting your approval to move forward with these policies. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Any questions?
If there are none, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Randolph. All right, we'll move to Item 25, Retail Liquor Certificates of Compliance, Possible Revisions to our City Code, Chapter 4. Ms. Tranquins?
Good evening, mayor, city council members. I do have a PowerPoint.
All right, back on pace.
Official logo, too.
Hope to do Darren proud. So we prepared this presentation based on the conversation that we had at the last workshop meeting regarding potential updates to our liquor store regulations, specifically on whether to adjust the cap, to what extent to adjust it, or whether to keep the cap at all. So to start with, I wanted to go back over a few of, of the state regulations, just to kind of lay the groundwork. I'm not going to read these slides word for word, you're welcome. But just to let you know that most of our regulatory authority over retail package stores derives from state law, and it is essentially limited to providing the certificate of compliance, basically saying that they have a location, that they do not have any sort of objectionable criminal record, and that they are otherwise eligible to receive a license from the state. There is a 60-day timeline from the date of receiving the application from that certificate to act on it, where the state deems it approved. Where we currently are in our regulations, we have a cap that is based on a population ratio. It's limited to one certificate per 5,000 residents. We currently have 33 that will be coming available as of August 1st. 32 of those have been issued, so we'll have one new certificate available August 1st. 26 of those are currently licensed stores in operation. Our current limitations regarding zoning and distances, they're allowed in certain commercial, industrial, and mixed-use zones through the zoning ordinance. Within the City Code, we also have distance limitations. They cannot be within 1,500 feet of another liquor store, 500 feet of a school, or 300 feet of a place of worship, as those are defined in the code. Also, something that we discussed at the workshop meeting, one of the state law criteria for provide, for approving a certificate of compliance is that the applicant has secured a location. We had, we in the legal department and finance have so far interpreted that to mean that they have an ownership or leasehold interest in real property at the location that they want to use, not necessarily that they have a finished building that they're ready to move into. Our application process is currently first come, first served. That's based on an application being complete. We will not accept an application for processing until the finance department has deemed it to be complete. And once a completed application is entered, then they are considered on our first come, first served basis. Once all the certificates have been approved that are available for that year, any other applications are automatically denied. As we discussed, one of the, one of the consequences that we have with our first come, first serve process is that you have both the figurative and the literal race to the window, which has included some unsavory tactics to try to be first in line. So we went back and looked at some other cities and what they do. Some of this we, we looked at in our previous research, and some of this is new or updated research that we've done. We did not look at every city in Tennessee, but we looked at cities that are similar in size, similar in geography, and also just some other cities that would, you know, answer our questions. As you can see, there's a, a mix of, of limits around the state. Some have a hard cap, like Smyrna, Jackson, Chattanooga, Memphis. You'll notice Memphis has a, a hard cap of 177 certificates, which I would say even for a city the size of Memphis was probably set artificially high in order to let the market adjust. The majority of cities that, that we researched use some sort of population ratio. And again, those ratios are really kind of all over the map. You'll see the most liberal being Franklin at one per 3,000 residents. Of course, Franklin with a small population size is not going to have a, a large number of certificates. The most stringent that we talked to being the city of White House that has one certificate per 12,000 residents. So that's, that's, that's the strictest that we saw. Some have additional location limits attached. Then, as you can see, Brentwood has both a population ratio cap and locations are limited to certain commercial districts within the city. Jackson and Morristown also only allow their package stores to go in certain areas of their cities. Couple of cities we looked at have no cap, specifically Lebanon and Oak Ridge. They are both, while they have no caps, they are, they, they limit their locations through their zoning ordinances, again, where these, where these establishments can go. Some of the application procedures that they have, we, we've previously talked about Clarksville, how they use a lottery system. Based on our research, they appear to be unique in the state in that system, although, as we can discuss, we believe that it has, it has merit to it. Brentwood and Franklin are both specifically first come, first served. I believe when we did our most recent amendment to our, our retail package store regulations, we modeled our first come, first served provision off of Brentwood and Franklin. Couple of cities, Mount Juliet and White House, will accept multiple applications, and then their legislative bodies vote on the best applicant based on criteria that are listed in the ordinance. And there are a lot of cities that are simply silent on how they handle the priority of applications. Couple of interesting notes that, that I put on there. You see, Jackson specifically, for their application, they require five copies of a site plan to be submitted. What this does, I believe, I wasn't able to speak with anyone in Jackson, but looking at it logically, that would require an applicant to have some amount of skin in the game as far as being further down the road with their development plans than just having a piece of green space land that they're applying to have a store location on, but not requiring them to, you know, put up the million or million and a half dollars to do a, a complete building, construction and build-out without having a license in place. Also, when we, when we spoke with Smyrna, they indicated that they, that their applicants must have a location secured, you know, a, a physical location prior to approval. Expiration was another thing that, that we discussed. Most, a lot of the cities that we looked at will have an expiration attached to their certificates. However, when you research, all of the expiration provisions that they have were enacted prior to the state's 2019 statutory amendment that removed the renewal requirement from the certificate of compliance. So at that, and for some context, that's why we also, when we did our most recent package store update, removed our renewal requirement, because our renewal requirement tracked what the state statutory language was. So once the state took it out, we took ours out. But speaking with, with a couple of these cities, it appears that they, they do retain those expirations on the books. And while I don't know the success of any enforcement that they've had with them, it sounds like they do intend to at least attempt to continue enforcing them if they have a certificate that hangs out past its expiration period. I did want to note, Clarksville is, is somewhat different among the rest of the cities that we looked at, where they don't just have an expiration date attached to their certificate, but they do say that if there is no, if there's no application with the state ABC within 120 days, that the city council can take a separate action by resolution to revoke their certificate. So it requires an affirmative act of the council to come back and, and remove that certificate from the applicant. As I alluded to, the Clarksville lottery is something that, that we have looked at extensively to, to update our code if we retain our cap. And, and I guess in a, at a high level, the clerk will, will publish notice that there are certificates that are coming available. They have a 20-day period where people can apply. Any, any complete applications that are submitted within that 20-day window are then submitted for further processing. If they, if their background check checks out and all that good stuff, then their name is entered into a lottery drawing at the next council meeting, where names are literally drawn out of a box and, and considered at that meeting. And the names, and if they have multiple certificates available, then they'll draw as many names out as there are certificates available. And the, the city, the Clarksville code itself, I think we have a, a copy of that, goes into rather lengthy detail on how, how that lottery is to be carried out. So the path forward for Murfreesboro, we see essentially three options. One, make no changes to the cap, leave, leave the, the number where it currently is, which, like I said, would, would leave us with, with one additional certificate coming open this year. Option two would be to adjust the cap. And with that, we've provided you some possible new ratios and showed you the number of available certificates that would, that would come up based on what those, what those ratios are for this current year. You can see, you know, if we, if we keep it at one per 5,000, we're at 33. All the way to if we go down to one per 3,000, that gets us up to 55, which gets us roughly in line with what Chattanooga's hard cap limit is. Option three, as we previously discussed, would be to eliminate the cap entirely and let the market decide. With option one or two, if a cap were to remain in place, staff recommends adopting a lottery-style system similar to what Clarksville has. If option three is chosen to remove the cap completely, that really obviates the need for a lottery, because each application could be considered on its merits when it comes in. That's not to say that it would open up the entire city to, to retail package stores, however, because the, the location restrictions, i.e. the setbacks in the code and the zoning restrictions in the zoning ordinance, would still be in place unless you chose to also remove those. But just by virtue of removing the cap, those location restrictions would still be in place so that you wouldn't have multiple liquor stores right on top of each other.
And the ABC rules, right?
Pardon?
And the ABC rules of minimum feet requirement between stores would still be in place.
Yes, yeah. Any, any, any state law is, is going to...
But we wouldn't see like a strip center with four liquor stores in it. I just want to make that clear.
Yes. Yes, as, as well as the, the last part I mentioned there, you know, looking at a new interpretation of, of securing a location, what that means, you know, if, if we want to require something like Smyrna has that, you know, requires site plan submission to come with an application, or if we want to be, make a strict interpretation that they must have a building in place. So with that, I'm available to answer any questions, or would love to hear your deliberation.
Go ahead.
We presently have 26 stores, is that right? And then how many licenses, how many have we already granted? 33 or 32?
We, we've, we've approved 32. And with 26 currently active, that leaves six that are, that are approved but not in operation.
I'm going to make the same comment I made at workshop. I mean, I would like to see the one or two things. I don't like someone being able to obtain a certificate and not use it. So what, Brentwood and Franklin, where it expires if a state license is not applied four and six months or not in operation within 12 months? Or add to that, the city council has the option to approve or deny. Because in some cases, you know, once someone gets a, an application, it takes a long time to build something, and, you know, in certain cases, financing may not be approved until the certificate is in place and you can show that you've got the ability to be able to, to do that. And that may take longer than 12 months. But the second thing, this industry is so heavily regulated by the state in where things can be and how they can be built and approved. I don't know of another, it's not the time where it was 30 years ago where, you know, liquor stores were, or package stores were as, as obscure as they used to be. Now with wine and beer and grocery stores, you know, I just don't see the point of regulating. The market will take care of itself. It's not like that if we have a cap that people, or we say that, you know, we eliminate a cap, that all of a sudden you're going to have 40 people go out and try to build stores. It's just not, that's just not going to happen, so...
And, and to add on to that, a lot of these new commercial plans...
And, and to add on to that, a lot of these new commercial plans we've had at least come through the last four years, alcohol and package stores are restricted uses on almost all of them. So I'm, I'm kinda the same way. Same exact options, the mayor just noted that I'm on the same page.
And I don't like putting our team in the situation where people are racing to get a certificate or that, you know, we end up opening up the opportunity to where, we talk about ethics, but where these certificates are, are sought after so much where there's bargaining behind closed doors on getting a certificate. Not saying that would ever happen, but, you know, do we, is there another industry that we have in our city that we regulate like this?
I don't know of one that the state allows to be regulated so heavily.
And I made the comment and people laughed about this, but, you know, we get criticized over the years about, for example, Walmart coming into our community. Well, there's one way for no more Walmarts to come in our community, stop shopping there. And, I mean, the market, if people are gonna, for example, mattress stores, or we did put a place in, we, we did put a, the thing in place for check cashing places to mimic this. So we've done that, but I, this is, looking and researching this, this, there, there's so many things that I see in this that are fraught with workarounds that I could just see significant issues in this, unless we, I mean, we've got seven that are outstanding right now that have not been built, correct?
That's correct. Well, we have, we have six currently and then the seventh one will become available.
That, and then I think, Aaron, how many people did you say that we may have that want that one?
Up to five, is what I would've been told.
Yeah. So I think what's happening now is because of the cap that we've put on, there are individuals who want those to keep other people from getting those. And so I, I'm, I'm probably more in favor of being like Lebanon and Oak Ridge and just not having, having a cap.
That's where I'm at.
That's where I'm at, too.
You wanna make the motion? Free market economic principles?
Yeah, I'm, I'm kinda like let the market work it out. If there's no cap, then you don't really need a lottery. But at the same point in time, I don't want, I don't want as many liquor stores and vape stores, you know?
Well, we don't have a lottery for vape stores. Maybe we should.
You read my mind.
No, no lotteries because we're for free market principles.
But vape stores are not regulated by the state, correct?
That, that's correct. They're, they're not, they're not as heavily regulated by the state and the state does not grant municipalities as much regulatory authority over those either. And I say, I say the state grants, I mean, the, the regulatory authority that we've been granted over like liquor stores is the number and the location.
Yeah, I, I just, things have changed so much and, you know, from when our ordinance was written, cause I, I mean, like, look, I would argue that discount beer and tobacco stores are no different than liquor stores, but discount beer and tobacco stores are not regulated. You don't have to have a, a certificate to do that. But the liquor stores now, when state law changed four years ago, liquor stores used to, could not sell paraphernalia, you couldn't sell beer. And now they're, they're the same. I mean, so it's, I, I mean, we don't regulate Publix. We don't regulate any new grocery store that sells wine and beer, cause that's regulated by the state now, so. And I will say this too, most of those businesses are all small business owners. I mean, I don't know one business that is a chain that's in the city of Murfreesboro. They're all-
You're referring to liquor stores?
Yes. I mean, they're all-
Yeah, I think so.
Owner-operators, the majority of all of them, so.
Yeah, I agree.
Anyway.
Yeah, and that's one part that will still continue to be, I think, aided by state law that no one person can have an interest in more than two. That, that in itself will, will keep out large corporate interests.
And I'm, I'm not saying this, Bill, and, and we talked about this at the workshop. Look, I, I wish there were less liquor stores, but what I have a problem with is the difference between all of these other businesses that if we wanted to regulate, that I would argue do, that are, are detrimental in certain areas, but we don't regulate those businesses and we don't have the opportunity that we can regulate those businesses. We have done our best to try to regulate car lots, that every time that you drive down Broad Street or Memorial, you've got transport trucks parked in the middle of the road unloading cars, or parked on the side of the road. And so, I mean, we had an issue at Sylvan Park where a lady got T-boned with a car unloading and we can't, we've done our best to regulate those, but there's not a, a state law that says you can only have one car lot per every 5,000 residents. I mean, so it's, in my opinion, I've said enough. I'll keep it at that.
Well, like I said earlier too, even, even if we remove the cap, we'll still have our location restrictions based on the zoning ordinance and the distance setbacks to help, you know, the, the city grow in a proper manner, if the, if the council should decide to remove the cap entirely and-
Are there any comments or someone have a motion?
I guess, what's the biggest deterrence to the zoning ordinance? Is it churches? Is it schools? Is it-
Uh, within the zoning ordinance?
Yeah, well, what keeps a liquor store out of an area, generally speaking.
Uh, well, under chart one, they're only allowed in, in certain zones, which are basically all the commercial zones and all the industrial zones. And even inside those zones, under the bulk zoning regulations, depending on what zone it's in, there has to be setbacks on the property lines, there has to be additional buffering if it's a commercial zone next to a residential zone. So there, there are tools in that toolbox to try to keep some level of separation between a retail package store or any commercial retail establishment so that it, it, the, the interference with residential uses is kept to a minimum.
And, and the, the distance requirements between, and just to clarify something, the distance requirements between a liquor store and a school and a church, or between one liquor store and another liquor store are, are not in the zoning ordinance, they're in the main city code.
State law?
Chap, chapter four of dealing with alcoholic beverages.
Do we have, I mean, this is a wild question, but it's on my mind. Why, why is the six people have a license? What is, is that the market that's deciding that they're not building them now or why? And how long have they had those licenses?
Uh, they have had those licenses for at least a year, probably some of them two years, is that correct? Since 2021. Okay, so some, some of them now are going on their third year of holding. And I, I could only speculate as to why, I haven't spoken with, with any of the applicants.
Some of them, Bill, I think, get projects approved and, you know, financing is tough where projects can't start or things change. But I do think it's fair to say, and I don't even know who's on the list, so I'm not saying this about any individual, but I do think when we pass that ordinance limiting those, we, we set what the market was. So we said one per 5,000 residents and we, all of a sudden set, this is what the number is. And we don't have a provision in place that allows someone to not be able to go and get a certificate and just hold it. And, you know, someone may approach one of those individuals to say, hey, I have a certificate, I'll sell it to you if you're interested in buying it. And we, we have a lot, we've set that market to happen. Is that two per applicant? Is that our, who is-
That's state law.
That's state law? And it's, with two within the community or?
I think it's two statewide.
So no one can own more than two liquor stores statewide?
That's correct.
Wow.
So about how many do we have out there that they're holding on to their certificates? Do we know?
I think there's six right now.
And how long, do you know the longevity of, how long they've been holding it?
Anywhere from one year to three years.
Well, it is a different world that we're living in. I, I shouldn't claim this, but I remember when there weren't any liquor stores in Murfreesboro and everybody went to corn sweats or to shovel. And, not that I did that. But it is a different world that we live in now in Murfreesboro and for the most part, it's not, there are negative sides to it, but, you know, I'm, it is a different world and we have to kind of adjust our thinking, so. I won't make the motion, but I'll, I'll support it if someone will. We have a motion?
I think we got enough.
And I guess, Adam, would, would the, would the motion be just for direction on what, what type of ordinance to see-
Yes.
-before the council?
Yeah.
Just, that'd be the direction is fine. I think what would, I don't think we necessarily need to make a motion to direct staff, but I think y'all have heard sort of what we've all said and, and with that maybe bring back an, an ordinance that we can discuss. And then if the council has a, doesn't want to support a no cap or doesn't, or wants to add that, then we can do that at that time, but that way we'll have something in front of us to be able to deliberate on.
Okay, then we'll, we'll plan on bringing back then a draft ordinance that removes the cap and authorizes the council to take subsequent action to revoke a certificate if there's no application to the ABC within six months.
And, and I'll say this too, council members, I think it would be good that now that we've had this discussion over the next period before we have our next meeting, I, I'm sure some stakeholders will reach out to us to maybe give us some pros and cons about those discussions, so that'll give us the ability to be able to talk about that with those individuals.
Yeah, that's what's in my mind is what's, I mean, I'm a free market person, what's the benefit of going from 30 liquor stores to 50 liquor stores? Are we creating an environment where there's more issues that involve alcohol and it's more taxing on our police or fire, our first responders?
Yeah, and I think between now and then, I want to reach out to some of the owners here in, here in town and maybe get the pros and cons of, of what that looks like. There may be a reason to not remove that cap. All right, let's move to the next item. We'll move to purchase of uniforms, forms, clothing and equipment items.
Thank you, Roman.
Thanks, Roman, for your hard work.
Thank you.
Hey, Bill.
Nice PowerPoint.
Sorry, I don't have a PowerPoint. Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Steve Gerald, Deputy Chief. First we have for your consideration is the purchasing of uniforms and clothing and equipment from Galls LLC. Police will spend up to $350,000 annually for uniforms and equipment, which will come from the department's operating budget. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
No questions, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
All right, the contract extension for the Heritage Cleaners.
Next, we're asking for your consideration to extend the contract with Heritage Cleaners for both the police and fire departments. City's been under contract with Heritage Cleaners since 2018 and we're asking for a one-year extension. Expenses from the police department will be funded from the department's operational budget up to $150,000. And expenses for the fire department will be funded through their operational budget up to $40,000. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to item 28, semi-tractor purchase.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Before you is an item to purchase a semi-tractor trailer truck. But while I have you and, you know, working for Darren, what's about to happen?
Good logo.
Buckle up, we've got 99 slides to get through and power through.
Can we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Yep. But I just wanted to take a moment to update you on the way bio solids are handled. So right now, we take sludge from the wastewater facility, that's dewatered, it's put into trucks, but even though it's dewatered, it's still 85% water and it's hauled to the landfill. That's the current thing. Reason we want to update you is cause you know, we recently awarded a contract for a bio solids dryer, 33 million. That's gonna begin construction soon, but it's gonna take about three years to do. So while we're doing it, uh, under the construction, they're gonna revamp our building, we'll be doing the same business at the same location, but this time it'll be dried. And you'll be able to touch it, feel it, it'll be able to go just about anywhere you want, it's legally dirt, and it'll be less than 10% water. So that means that the number of trucks will be greatly reduced. Currently, we're taking many, many trips to the landfill. We hauled over 50 million pounds of bio solids to landfill last year, accident-free and proud of our guys there. But in the future, with this vehicle, we'll still be positioned to make that transition, even though we're gonna go from say eight loads a day to one load a day. This will fit within our fleet. The way we've practiced it, we're gonna age out the old things and keep the new. In three years, this will be one of two trucks that will do the main hauling. And so we're not gonna have a lot of leftovers. And it's about $170,000 out of our working capital and we request your approval. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Cool truck.
No questions, I move for approval.
Second. Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to item 29, Murfreesboro Water Resource Department, CUD Boundary Revision Number Eight. Valerie.
Come on, Valerie, Darren would've had this done by now.
All right, I'm sorry about that. Valerie, I slapped him for you, don't worry.
I think you're doing great, Valerie.
You are. Just kidding.
So periodically, Consolidated Utility District and Murfreesboro Water will change, change the boundary to our service area. We've had a request, two, two requests, one from Mirthford County, from the mayor's office, to serve the solid waste transfer facility that's just north of our water treatment plant. They enter the solid waste facility from Jefferson Pike. There were challenges to serving that solid waste facility with water and sewer from Jefferson Pike, and so they requested to connect to our water and sewer at the water treatment plant to serve the facility. They'll have to cross the river to do that. So that was the first request. The second request was from Consolidated Utility District and staff. There's a property on Dill Lane, CUD is currently serving the property and the water department does, Murfreesboro Water, does not have a water line along Dill Lane. So it only makes sense for CUD to continue to serve that and for that property to be in their water service area. So we make those requests, changes to the water service boundary.
Any questions?
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 30, the American Rescue Plan Grant Management Task Order.
Yes. So through the city, the department has received 10, 10 million dollars' worth of ARP funds. Those will serve or pay for portions of three different projects, our Hobos Pipe Sewer Rehabilitation Project, our 2023, 24 Sewer Rehabilitation Project, and those two are, are under construction currently, and one that we've already completed, that is labeled 2021 Sewer Rehab. The, to date, the grant management has been paid for from the Hobos Pipe and the 2023, Neither LJA or staff realized the time that it would take to submit all of the required documentation into the grant management system. And so we have asked LJA through our master services agreement to give us a task order moving forward to help us manage the grant and to submit the required information. To date, we have received, and you can see the grant funds for each project. To date, on the 2021 Sewer Rehab Project, it's, like I said, complete and we have received $3 million or $3.5 million towards paying our subs back for that project. The LJA task order that we requested is in the amount of $105,705. We request approval for that grant management task order.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Valerie.
Thank you.
All right, we have a couple of reappointments to the Parks and Recreation Commission. We have Leroy Cunningham and Kent Seiler.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We also have a very controversial appointment to the Historic Zoning Commission. Planning Commission Member Brian Prance, who's sitting in the audience. Brian, thank you for your service on Planning Commission. But Brian is gonna be Chase Salas. Tristan Carroll replaced Chase Salas. And so we have to appoint a Planning Commission Member to historical zoning. And so Brian has graciously agreed to do that.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Hey, Brian, all joking aside, thank you for your service on Planning Commission. We appreciate your hard work.
You do a great job.
Thank you, Brian.
All right, we have four different permits for, or actually five different permits for either a special use or beer permits. Are they all in order, Aaron?
They are. All applicants meet our requirements and we recommend approval pending final building and codes inspections.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, Mr. Kerr, T-Dot, contract for T-Dot for New Salem Phase Three.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council.
We talk about completion of Phase Two before we move to, I'm just kidding, Jim.
It'll be pretty close. Actually, actually, it's, Phase Three is supposed to let in October, so.
Phase Two, they're paving. When I was out there yesterday, they're paving.
The last I heard unofficially, not from T-Dot, but they, they said they were three months out.
Awesome.
So I don't know if that's true or not, but anyway. T-Dot plans to widen State Route 99 to a five-lane cross-section to include bike lanes and traffic signal upgrades between Caseyne Lane and Veterans Parkway. Staff is working with T-Dot to combine efforts and expand the project to include adding fiber optic cable for the communication between traffic signals from Caseyne Lane to Veterans Parkway, which is an extension of the existing ITX, ITS system along Highway 99. The contract with T-Dot outlines the city's participation in this project, which includes the addition of the traffic fiber cost. The city will be required to match actual cost upon completion of the project. T-Dot anticipates the construction cost of this, of these improvements to be approximately $140,360. However, for project efficiency in the light of the current market conditions, authorities requested up to $150,000, which will be funded by State Street Aid. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade? Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. All right, any other business from staff? Any other business from council?
The only thing I have, and I think Steve is gonna put it up, thank you to Dear Murfreesboro, but the skate park opens tomorrow at 10 o'clock. So that was on Dear Murfreesboro, so if you can't make fun of yourself, who can you make fun of?
Can you, can you do that for us tomorrow?
No, absolutely not. Yeah, so 10 o'clock tomorrow, Nate and his team have worked really hard to get that open. We'll do a ribbon cutting and a grand opening for the skate park and the pump track. That's been a long time coming. That's been a project we've talked about for probably 10 years.
I really do think you ought to put a helmet on, gloves and be the first one to.
Yeah, fall in.
At 10 a.m. at Old Fort Park, right, Mayor?
10 a.m., Old Fort Park. And it will be open seven days a week from dusk until dawn. Or dawn until dusk. I guess.
You know where you'll be at night.
I guess you could do dusk till dawn and make sure you've got your insurance policy.
Exactly.
Yeah, so dawn until dusk. 10 o'clock Friday.
Appreciate our first responders.
That's right. Yes, sir.
A big announcement I found out this week. Uncle Dave Makendaze is coming back to Murfreesboro. It will be held at Hop Springs September 6th and September 7th.
Cool. All right, seeing no other business? Oh, and by the way, I have to say this, not that she would be watching, but today is my mom's 69th birthday. So happy birthday.
Birthday, Mama McFarland.
Okay, just one thing. Go vote. If you've not voted yet, folks, it's a real low turnout on voting right now, so go vote. Please go vote.
Do your research first.
Hatriotic thing you can do. Go vote.
If you don't vote, you don't get to complain. Right, Bill?
That's what I've always heard.
That's the rule.
That's what I've always heard.
All right, we'll stand adjourned.